This meeting of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee for November 5, 2025, will now come to order at?
1:30 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon. This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are Trustee Shabat Shibin, Trustee Cynthia Litengary, and our alternate trustee Renee Patterson. There's no citizen signed up to speak that I know of, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So we're starting with item A, which is our Military Education Update, and this report is only a report, it's not an action item. So Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the board, this item is presented to update the Board of Trustees on activities regarding the military education initiatives, and with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Norma Perez, the Senior Vice Chancellor of Instruction and Student Services, will provide an overview and respond to questions. Dr. Perez?
Thank you, Chancellor. Excuse me. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and trustee. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce retired Lieutenant Colonel Robert Glover, who has been leading the efforts regarding military education for HCC. Bob, would you please stand?
What follows is a brief update regarding the Houston City College Military Education Program. Under the leadership of retired Lieutenant Colonel Robert Glover, this initiative connects HCC students with leadership, workforce, and academic paths to military commissioning, enlistment, or the Department of Defense civilian roles, establishing HCC as a key pipeline for military and national security careers. As detailed in Slides 2 and 3, the program has facilitated internships and scholarships like the National Research Enterprise Internship Program, the Army and Navy STEM Student Employment Program, and the Cybersecurity Focus Viceroy Program. Mr. Glover has established Navy commissioning pathways such as the baccalaureate degree completion program, while boosting recruitment in high schools through events like Tech Fest Life. Strategic wins include the ROTC MOUs with the University of Houston and Rice University, the Army of Influence Status, and Texas A&amp;M's Virtual Institute for Cybersecurity and Electromagnetic Spectrum Research and Employ, which is the Viceroy Program. We are now members of that. The maritime industrial base readiness and partnerships with the Army Futures Command. The ROTC co-enrollment grew from Fall 2024 to Fall 2025, with the Army ROTC increasing to eight students and the Air Force to 13. Overall, program enrollment expanded several programs from 17 to 39, and employment pathways from none last year to 80 this year. And that's the column that you see here. Here's the employment pathways. The key gains for the internships for Fall 2025, that is still in the process, I feel you don't see any enrollments there. Those students have applied for internships, and we won't know about them until probably in the spring. So some of the key gains expected to lead to additional growth include the 10 Health Professional Scholarships Program applicants that are already in the pipeline, the new cyber academy scholarships and test resource management center internships, and then we expect the Viceroy Program to increase from 12 students to 25 students by fiscal year 27. Some of the long-range expectations describe expectations to boost the ROTC pipelines for Army, Air Force, and Navy, and promote opportunities like the baccalaureate degree completion program, the Cybersecurity Academy Scholarship, and the Department of Defense internships. Our long-range vision builds on last year's participation surge, reinforcing successes and expanding options to ensure long-term viability and HCC's role in preparing more students for impactful careers in military and related fields. So that concludes the presentation, and if you have any questions, retired Lieutenant Robert Glover and myself are available for questions.
Yes. Trustee?
Just one question, and I apologize, I didn't do y'all the courtesy of sending this in advance, so not expecting a response right now. But we talked about this when Dr. Glover came to us the first time, to talk about standing up the program, and that was the opportunity to cobble together unique either pathways or combinations of pathways that serve specific needs for the Armed Forces, still very keen to understand where there's an opportunity to stand up some of those unique pathways to meet unique needs of the Armed Services in this very unique moment in time. And I ask that at this moment in time because next year we're going to be embarking on our kind of curriculum review and our programs review per SB 37, and it would be good to have those needs of the Armed Services in mind as we're looking at some of these programs that, in isolation of that news, might look like they might be on a target or what have you, or part of the discussion, but we would want to treat differently because they would serve a unique need.
Thank you very much, and Lieutenant Colonel Glover is behind you, Dr. Perez.
That's a great question, trustee, and the quick answer is, there are different pathways. The way that I have structured this is that students in certain academic majors have to see the relationship to those opportunities across the services, and as well as in not only the uniform part, but also the DOD civilian part. So once we get that part done, which is happening right now, that synergy that you're asking about is already there. The other part of this is a thing called DOD 8140.
This meeting of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee for November 5th, 2025, will now come to order at?
1:30.
1:30 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon. This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are Trustee Shabat Shibin, Trustee Cynthia Litengary, and our alternate trustee Renee Patterson. There's no citizen signed up to speak that I know of, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So we're starting with Item A, which is our Military Education Update, and this report is only a report, it's not an action item. So Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, this item is presented to update the Board of Trustees on activities regarding the military education initiatives. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Norma Perez, the Senior Vice Chancellor of Instruction and Student Services, will provide an overview and respond to questions. Dr. Perez?
Thank you, Chancellor. Excuse me. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and trustee. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce Retired Lieutenant Colonel Robert Glover, who has been leading the efforts regarding military education for HCC. Bob, would you please stand? What follows is a brief update regarding the Houston City College Military Education Program. Under the leadership of Retired Lieutenant Colonel Robert Glover, this initiative connects HCC students with leadership, workforce, and academic paths to military commissioning, enlistment, or the Department of Defense civilian roles, establishing HCC as a key pipeline for military and national security careers. As detailed in Slides 2 and 3, the program has facilitated internships and scholarships like the National Research Enterprise Internship Program, the Army and Navy STEM Student Employment Program, and the Cybersecurity Focus VICE-Roy Program. Mr. Glover has established Navy commissioning pathways such as the Baccalaureate Degree Completion Program, while boosting recruitment in high schools through events like Tech Fest Life. Strategic wins include the ROTC MOUs with the University of Houston and Rice University, the Army of Influence Status, and Texas A&amp;M's Virtual Institute for Cybersecurity and Electromagnetic Spectrum Research and Employ, which is the VICE-Roy Program. We are now members of that. The Maritime Industrial Base readiness and partnerships with the Army Futures Command. The ROTC co-enrollment grew from Fall 2024 to Fall 2025, with the Army ROTC increasing to eight students and the Air Force to 13. Overall, program enrollment expanded several programs from 17 to 39, and employment pathways from none last year to 80 this year. And that's the column that you see here. Here's the employment pathways. The key gains expect and for the internships for Fall '25, that is still in the process. I feel you don't see any enrollments there. Those students have applied for internships, and we won't know about them until probably in the spring. So some of the key gains expected to lead to additional growth include the 10 Health Professional Scholarships Program applicants that are already in the pipeline, the new cyber academy scholarships and test resource management center internships, and then we expect the VICE-Roy Program to increase from 12 students to 25 students by fiscal year '27. Some of the long-range expectations describe expectations to boost the ROTC pipelines for Army, Air Force, and Navy, and promote opportunities like the Baccalaureate Degree Completion Program, the Cybersecurity Academy Scholarship, and the Department of Defense internships. Our long-range vision builds on last year's participation surge, reinforcing successes and expanding options to ensure long-term viability and HCC's role in preparing more students for impactful careers in military and related fields. So that concludes the presentation, and if you have any questions, Retired Lieutenant Robert Glover and myself are available for questions.
Yes. Trustee?
Just one question, and I apologize, I didn't do y'all the courtesy of sending this in advance, so not expecting a response right now. But we talked about this when Dr. Glover came to us the first time, to talk about standing up the program. And that was the opportunity to cobble together unique either pathways or combinations of pathways that serve specific needs for the Armed Forces, still very keen to understand where there's an opportunity to stand up some of those unique pathways to meet unique needs of the Armed Services in this very unique moment in time. And I ask that at this moment in time because next year we're going to be embarking on our kind of curriculum review and our programs review per SB 37, and it would be good to have those needs of the Armed Services in mind as we're looking at some of these programs that, in isolation of that news, might look like they might be on a target or what have you, or part of the discussion, but we would want to treat differently because they would serve a unique need.
Thank you very much. And Lieutenant Colonel Glover is behind you, Dr. Perez.
That's a great question, trustee, and the quick answer is, there are different pathways. The way that I have structured this is that students in certain academic majors have to see the relationship to those opportunities across the services and as well as in not only the uniform part, but also the DOD civilian part. So once we get that part done, which is happening right now, that synergy that you're asking about is already there. The other part of this is a thing called DOD 8140, which is cyber-specific. There are certain line numbers on the table of organization, I'm sorry, the organizational chart for the Department of Defense across all cyber positions, and that marriage of what we have to offer in computer science, engineering, cybersecurity, fill into those blocks. And I'm establishing that relationship right now with the Department of the Navy to make sure that that happens, along with all these other internships, some of which are co-enrollment type of internships where they lead to positions following the internship being completed. So it all meshes up together.
Thank you. That's really helpful, and appreciate you thinking on your feet like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else? Would you like to add anything else?
No, just that, as I indicated earlier, Retired Lieutenant Glover has really spent a great deal of time of really putting us on the map with all of the Armed Forces in the city of Houston and with the surrounding universities, so he's done a great job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move to Item B, which is Veterans and International Student Services Update. Dr. Ford Fisher?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This is a discussion item to highlight strategies for support provided to veterans and international student services. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Elcorta, Vice Chancellor of Student Services, will provide an overview and respond to questions. Dr. Elcorta?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chancellor, Board of Trustees, and guests. I'll be presenting on veteran military affiliated student services, as well as an update on international student program. We have a dedicated team at HCC that focuses on supporting both our international students and our military affiliated students and veterans. I do want to call up and recognize our team, Dr. Hallam Douglas, Associate Vice Chancellor for Special Programs and Success. Please rise as I call your name. Thank you. As well, yeah, thank you. I'll actually be calling a group of people, so we'll go through that. Capri Thomas, Director of Veteran and Military Affiliated Student Success. Dr. Nathan, Director of International Student Programs. I also would like to recognize the staff of our veterans and international student programs. Please be acknowledged. Team? All members? Thank you. VMAS administers and oversees a wide range of VA educational benefits on behalf of our students. These include some of the items that are listed here, including post 9/11 GI Bill and the Montgomery GI Bill for Active Duty. Our VMAS population includes veterans, active-duty service members, reservists, and dependents. Examining enrollment data reveals that trends among our military affiliated students, notably 40% of our students have exhausted their benefits. This highlights the need for ongoing support as we see shifts in enrollment for Fall '24 and '25. Our enrollment numbers show a steady increase over the years, reflecting our commitment to serving our veterans. The Fall 2025 semester represents the first reporting period for the academic year. These numbers will continue to increase as additional terms are included. I do want to note that we have seen an increase in Houston City College being approved for CEU clock-hour programs, which further expands our opportunities for our veterans and military affiliated students to pursue continuing ed and workforce-aligned training. In '24 and '25, our top academic programs for veterans included AS in Biology, Health Sciences for 605 students, AA in Multidisciplinary for 88 students, and AA Business of 444 students. Our degree completion remains strong. Associate degrees increased from 210 to 314, and certificate completions increased from 314 to 367. Beyond compliance certification, VMAS also is committed to building connections for students, and you could see some of those examples on this slide. And I do want to announce the Veterans Day Celebration, which is November 10th, and I hope you all could attend that announcement, and we're expecting a good turnout for that event. I'm going to now shift gears to our International Student Programs update. Houston City College has been a college of choice for international students, and ISP provides many full services to engage and retain our students throughout their journey. This growth has been significant, with international enrollment rising from 3,151 students in '21-'22 to 4,034 students. This reflects our commitment to fostering a global learning environment. We are hoping that if there are no major changes, these growth trends will continue to increase throughout the years. As you can see, Asia has been the region with the largest number of international students who enrolled in our diverse academic programs. International students are self-paying students, and their focus is in earning their associate's degree and certificate in a timely manner. We have implemented several outreach initiatives, including mixers, again, to keep our students engaged at HCC. We have experienced some challenges, but the team has devised some solutions to address some of those concerns. And we do want to finally highlight our Real Journey Campaign that we've been working with our District Communications Office. It's highlighting our Real Journey Campaign, which features five international student ambassadors. This year-long documentary series aims to express global perspectives and promote our diverse community. In conclusion, we are proud of the progress we've been making for our veterans and our international student communities. Together, we will continue to foster an inclusive and supportive environment. Thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Questions? Thank you for that report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to Item C, Continuing Education Update. Dr. Ford Fisher?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This is a discussion item to provide the Board with outcomes data regarding continuing education. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Norma Perez will provide an overview and respond to questions. Dr. Perez?
Thank you, Chancellor, Madam Chair, and trustees. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce the CE District staff, who handle the centralized functions of CE in collaboration with the colleges and their COEs. Staff, would you please stand? So just a reminder, this is just the district staff. There are staff members at each of our colleges that also work on continuing education. So the Houston City College Continuing Education Awards are designed to provide students with options for short-term credentials that serve as a career starter. These credentials can be developed quickly based on industry needs. While these short-term credentials are intended to serve immediate career needs, they are also designed to lead into credit pathways. So continuing education awards are offered across 10 Centers of Excellence. Awards are conceived, developed, and managed at the college level with administrative support from the district to meet auditing, compliance, and state reporting requirements. It should be noted that the data in this report reflects solely, this is going to show you the function between the college and the district, and then here are our metrics. So the data on this report reflects solely CE awards. It does not reflect our apprenticeship, BASS, or corporate training are not part of these data. From academic year 2023 to academic year 2025, enrollment increased by 28%, 5,844 to 7,475, recovering from a dip in academic year 2024. During the same year, or during the same period, completions increased 13% from 1,672 to 1,894 students. So a majority of the COEs exhibited increases in enrollment and completion numbers in this time span. The dual-credit staff is in discussions with our, on another note, the dual-credit staff is in discussions with our ISD partners to determine the short-term training programs to be offered at CE, as CE with the appropriate crosswalks. As you all know, changes to the Texas Administrative Code 4.83 now allows us to offer CE courses to the ISDs with the condition that they align with a Level 1 certificate. Also, beginning academic, next academic year 2026-27, these CE short-term training programs will be eligible for financial aid. So recent trends suggest an overall positive direction for continuing education enrollment and CE certificate completion. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have at this time.
Questions? Yes. Trustee?
The chart on Slide 6, that is a large gap between enrollment and completion. Just curious if you could, you know, provide some context around what do you think is driving that significant appears from the visual low percentage of folks that enroll, you know, following through and completing? I would imagine that the continuing educations are, it's a class or two, maybe a semester or two, and I might just be uneducated on that one. So curious what you think is driving that large difference between those two curves?
I'm going to ask Dr. Burridge, she can provide an explanation. Could be some changes within the funding sources. Dr. Burridge?
So there are a couple of things. One is the biggest increase between '24 and '25 was actually the public safety programs, and in particular firefighting. That's actually one of the longer programs. So for those awards that began in '25, we're expecting to see an uptick in 2026. So that's one of the reasons you see that gap. Another reason you see the gap in CE is that some students are looking for a continuing education award. Other students are taking one or two CE courses to enhance their career and may be less interested in an award. So I expect in the long run, there will always be some gap there, but the trick is to make sure the awards are cohesive and together have an advantage for the student in the workplace so they're incentivized to take the entire award.
All right, thanks for that.
Anything else you'd like to add, Dr. Bettes?
No, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no any other, yes, sir.
Yeah, just a moment of privilege, since the theme of supporting veterans was woven throughout this entire committee meeting, just wanted to say thank you to all of our administrative staff and faculty, as well as students who are veterans. Really appreciate the sacrifice that you've made for this country, and we're here for you. So thank you to all the veterans.
Well said, trustee Shubin. This meeting of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee will now adjourn. Well, are we adjourning to a closed session? I don't need, I don't need us to.
No closeness.
No, right? Okay, all right. So we're now adjourned at?
1:49 PM.
Okay, thank you.
See how much louder I can make this thing?
This is just what I don't know.
I think this is as loud as my microphone goes. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. So now let me find my script, let me pull my script up. Greetings, everyone. I'm actually alive. I have not escaped yet. The meeting of the Audit Committee for November 5, 2025, will come to order at?
2:02 PM.
This meeting was called for the purpose... ... for the President of the Department of Commerce and Assistant Trustee La Lou Davies. I would give a public comment. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the period of citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Department of Services office. There are no citizens to speak before the Audit Committee today. And if some questions I'd like to put to you, please, I'm going to be sensitive. I think...
Dr. Vandiver Starwark, if we could pause for a minute? We'll get in an interruption, a bad connectivity. Is it possible to reset so we can check your connectivity?
Hold on, let's see. I can reset. This is my board, it's my board Wi-Fi, so hold on. It'll start all over if that's what you guys want to do.
You're fine now. It was just going in and out of the connectivitys, but you're fine now. You're clear now.
Okay, so I'll put it, I'll sit it right there on the computer. Maybe that will help us. Okay, I see it. I look a little fuzzy, but if you guys are okay with it, we'll go forward. So we will cover Item D first, and in the interest of time, the two report items, Items B and Item C, we will accept into the public record as reports. I want to focus a little more on the Enterprise Risk Management Annual Report, because this report is going to be a premier focus for our upcoming budget issues. So if we can begin with, let me read it. Item D, the Report on Quarterly Control and Compliance Attestation. This is a report item and no action is required. Chancellor Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'd like to get clarification. You said Item B, is that right? B as in baby? Boy?
Item D as in David. The Report on Quarterly Control and Compliance Attestation.
Okay, Item E.
Item D.
Very good. Thank you so very, very much, Madam Chair. Thank you so very much for that. So this is a discussion item presented quarterly with the intent to enhance the atmosphere of trust and accountability between the college administration, members of the board, and the public. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Nicole Montgomery, General Counsel, will provide a status report and respond to questions. Dr. Montgomery.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, Madam Chair, trustees. Before you is the quarterly attestation for the period June 1, 2025 through August 31, 2025. We did not receive any attestation exceptions for this period, so with that, we will take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board or from members of the committee?
No, ma'am.
Having no questions, we accept the report as submitted, and congratulations. No issues. We are very happy about that. Let's go then to Item A, Enterprise Risk Management. Let me go back to A. This is also a report item and no action is required. Chancellor Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, once again, and members of the board. This is, as you mentioned, a discussion item to provide the Board of Trustees with an overview of the results of the Enterprise Risk Management assessment. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Mr. Robert McCracken, Vice Chancellor, will provide an overview and respond to questions. Mr. McCracken.
Good afternoon, thank you. This is an annual report that we go through each year, so portions of this I'm going to step through pretty quickly. But ultimately, when we're talking about the top 10 risks, we're talking about those things that tend to fall in between individual responsibilities, and they fall kind of in those spaces in between, and they require kind of a larger view of the risk itself and kind of as well as the mitigation. And so skipping through the goals, this is an iterative process where we simply identify the risk, we assess it, we treat it, we monitor and report, and then we come back and we do it again the following year. What you've gotten over the course of the last 10 reports to the board has been a report on each of last year's top 10 risks, and so that's part of our monitoring process. We also do monitoring through the quarterly attestation process where each of the DRIs is signing off and reviewing their risk mitigation efforts and signing off on that as part of the attestation process. When we do the risk identification, we do council member interviews where we're interviewing all of the chancellor's direct reports plus several other people. We're also looking at education benchmarks, internal audit reports, et cetera. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is identify those things that we cannot avoid, but we have to do, and those are those things that are both very high risk or high impact, but also very likely to happen. And the goal is these are the items that only the people in this room at a very high level can organize the resources to manage those risks by either reducing the likelihood of things going wrong or increasing the likelihood of success as we go through those efforts. So in broad terms, risk management is assessing and ranking the risk. Strategy planning, institutional effectiveness is helping us with the metrics and the analysis of the data related to that. Internal audit is our integrity check, so they're doing the integrity and validation of the data. Just to give a sense of where we're at in this process, so we did the top 10 risk mitigation reports have come to the board Audit Committee over the last year. We did 24 interviews. Terry Corrigan, head of internal audit, and I did 24 interviews this year, which included 36 participants. We reviewed internal audit reports, external benchmark data. We incorporated those items into the internal audit plan that the board approved in August. We presented the information to CEC in October and reviewed the schedule for reporting for the upcoming year. Right now, we're doing the annual report to you, and ultimately, this is a precursor to the kickoff to the budget planning session, which will begin in December. As none of the items on this list should strike you as a surprise, if we're doing our jobs effectively, you'll see these coming, and these will be items that you'll be hearing us discuss during the budget discussions. Just in terms of frame...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. If you can put the slide back up. In terms of frame of reference, one of the higher education benchmark data is from United Educators. They survey all of their policyholders annually. They will come out with a new report usually around January, so we'll see updated data coming out in January. But if you look at this top 10 risk and you compare it to the items that we have, you see a lot of similarities. This is a list of the top 10 risks. I'm going to go through these relatively quickly. The thing to note on the chart is it's showing where these ranked over the last several years. You will see that the top four haven't changed very much and are unlikely to change. We know enrollment is kind of an essential component of what we do. We have continuing changes in the enrollment landscape. Campus security isn't going away. House Bill 33 was some new legislation that even increased further the requirements and expectations around campus security. IT systems, cybersecurity is certainly always going to be a concern and issue. And deferred maintenance, we know that the budgetary needs exceed the budgetary amounts available. New this year's artificial intelligence. This is a complicated risk in the sense that it's a combination of we are seeing increased fraud attempts from very sophisticated uses of AI. We're also seeing it on the academic side, but we're also seeing that we have to integrate AI tools that are built into most of the software, et cetera, that we're going to be using, and we have to do that effectively, because if we don't, our competitors will. And ultimately, that's going to require that our people change their skills. In some cases, we're going to have to adapt our roles to manage that. And so that item is new on the list, and we'll talk about the mitigation for that in a minute. Minors on campus policing, Title IX, very standard issues that we've had for the last couple of years. Website accessibility, we made great progress in the last year addressing that. The concern around this one is to make sure as we switch to the new website that we resource it appropriately so that we continue to maintain that compliance. If we can do that, that will probably drop off the list. And Senate Bill 37 will not have an annual report, because that's an item the board is already addressing. That was an item that the board needed to weigh in on kind of as we go through it. So it's on the list. If we manage it effectively, it becomes sort of a non-issue. If we manage that ineffectively, has pretty severe consequences. The risk reporting schedule is the same as prior years. We just kept each of those reports in the same month as before. And with that, I will take any questions.
Committee members, are there any questions? Mr. McCracken, thank you so much. We worked diligently to establish this risk management system because we understand as a board that we must effectively manage our risk, and it can be catastrophic financially if we are underprepared or unprepared. So thank you so much for this, and we will now, we know that we will move forward with making this a signature piece in the budgeting process, because in the past, as trustee Sean Chieven has noted, that we have somehow managed to identify but not quite address risks such as deferred maintenance. And these are things that we now have to look forward to doing and adding. So thank you for this risk management system, and I will say again for probably the untenth time, there's nothing like this in the nation. This is an extraordinary piece of work incorporating project management and risk, and thank you so much for it. And with that note, if there are no more questions, we would like to accept Report Item B and Report Item C as submitted to the board. We are going to utilize Report Item C to continue the conversation concerning the Enterprise Risk Management System. Those two items, report items, work in tandem. So I want to thank this team for being able to work from this perspective, and we will be giving them a bit more leeway to help us to understand what our planning looks like for succession, for artificial intelligence, for security and safety, for cybersecurity, for deferred maintenance, and for student mental health, of which one of our report items is actually part of this meeting. So thank you so much, and if there are no more questions and no more comments, we stand adjourned at?
2:15 PM.
Hope you feel better.
Oh, you all have not helped me to escape. Monica?
Yeah, I'm here.
I want to say thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would have kept you to campaign had you helped me to escape this house.
Don't tempt me, Pretta. I'll show up.
You can help me to escape. Now we can celebrate. We must celebrate. Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
This meeting stands adjourned. You all have a good afternoon, and I think the next meeting is at 2:30?
That's correct.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I'm going to get started because we have a lot to do in this committee. The meeting of the Board Governance Committee for November 5th, 2025 will now come to order at?
2:31 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The committee members are trustee Monica Reichart, trustee Sean Chieven, trustee Dave Wilson, and alternate trustee Lalu Davies. Opportunity for public comment. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens' form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the Board Governance Committee today. Topics for discussion and our action, please note that items G and H will be discussed in closed session at the end of the agenda. We might move that forward a little bit, but that's just, those are going to be in closed session. We will begin with item A, overview of Senate Bill 37 and implementation plan. This is a report item, no action is required. Melissa Maholic, Board Counsel, will introduce the item.
Thank you. So we have several policy changes we're going to talk about today related to Senate Bill 37. We'll get into those in some more detail in the next items. A portion of those are being presented for approval today. Those have very straightforward, simple, we think, changes that should be easy to approve. And then there's a batch of them that will be towards the end of the agenda for discussion that are a little more complicated. So we wanted to get some feedback from the committee before we finalize those changes and bring them for approval next month. So what I'm going to do to start us off is go over just a general overview of Senate Bill 37. Some of these things we've already dealt with. We're focusing on two specific areas today, so feel free to stop me and ask questions. I'll just go over sort of what the bill says about these different requirements and what action is required of the board on each one. So generally speaking, Senate Bill 37 covers four different areas. Governance, there is a statement in the statute regarding shared governance, which is something that has been a part of what you all do for a long time. It's in the statute now. It talks about the relationship between the board and the administration, but emphasizes that the board retains final decision-making authority over academic policy and institutional operations. Faculty senate, we have already addressed in September, that September 1st was the effective date for that provision, so we'll skip over that one for now. The two we're going to focus on today are employment. So there are provisions in Senate Bill 37 that address the employment and evaluation of certain administrators. And then there are some changes that will be required to faculty discipline and grievance processes. And then the other area will be curriculum. There is a curriculum review committee, which we've discussed in some detail as well. And then provisions regarding the review of minor degrees and certificates. So administrator employment, we'll start with the employment aspect. Beginning on January 1st, the board must approve or deny the hiring of a provost, deputy associate, or assistant provost or analogous positions. The terminology of Senate Bill 37 seems to be geared more towards four-year universities. It doesn't necessarily match up with the terms that we use, but the policy revisions that you'll see sort of create the analogy between certain positions that we have and positions that are identified specifically in the statute. There seems to be a focus on those that deal with curriculum and you'll see that later on. Additionally, Senate Bill 37 says that the board may overturn any hiring decision for certain positions. In the statute here, they've specifically listed vice presidents, deans, or similar administrative positions. So there's a little bit of a distinction there between what's identified in the statute and you'll see when we look at the policy revisions how we've reconciled that. The board action that's required here is to approve the revisions to DC local. And then beginning on January 1st, the board will have a role in employment decisions as outlined in the law and will be outlined in your policies. Any questions on that one before I move on? Okay. Administrator evaluations. So beginning on January 1st, Senate Bill 37 requires that the chancellor conduct annual evaluations for certain provisions. They are listed in the statute. Again, we've had to analogize some of those to the positions that you have at HCC. You'll see that in BF and BFA local. And then the chancellor must report to the Board of Trustees any removal decisions. So any decision to non-renew the contract of one of those positions or to reassign somebody in one of those positions. So the board action here is to approve and review the revisions to the policies. There isn't any requirement here that the board take action in the future on these employment decisions. Faculty grievances and discipline. So beginning on January 1st, only the chancellor, a provost, or their designees may be involved in decision-making regarding faculty grievance or faculty discipline. So this is going to create some changes, mostly in your lower-level review of employee grievances, where you may have a supervisor who is another faculty member involved, things like that. So there have been some changes recommended to these policies, particularly DGBA, on how we might revise that process to still allow multiple levels and then also comply with Senate Bill 37. with Senate Bill 37. Additionally, this provision says that a faculty member who is not in an administrative leadership position may not have final decision-making authority over the hiring of any faculty administrator. And so these revisions will primarily deal with grievances, and they'll be in DGBA local, DIAA local, and DIAB local, and those will be presented today for discussion, and they'll come back for approval in December. These are a little more complicated and require some feedback. Any questions on that before I go on to curriculum? Okay. Curriculum review. So the Senate Bill 37 requires the Board to review the general education curriculum at least every five years and certify that they've done that with the Higher Education Coordinating Board. The administration secondarily must, on an annual basis, provide an update to the Board each year of any changes to the curriculum. So if anything's changed, they'll bring that to you. Otherwise, the Board will just review that and certify to the coordinating board that that's been done by January 1st of each applicable year. So we have sort of a timeline here that follows an email that I sent to the Board. I guess it's last month now because it's November. So in the fall, the administration's been working on determining processes and internal deadlines. We expect that by December of 2025, we'll have all of these policies approved and in place. Also, in December of 2025, we anticipate the Board will appoint the committee if the committee is desired. We'll talk about that in a little detail in just a few minutes. And then spring and fall, the curriculum review will get underway. The first certification will be due before January 1st of 2027 by the Board to the coordinating board. Okay, so the curriculum review by the Board, the statute lays out the things that you're supposed to be looking at. So first and foremost is whether or not the content of your general education curriculum is appropriate. So you're looking at whether it's foundational and fundamental to post-secondary education, necessary to prepare students for civic and professional life, to equip students to participate in workforce and the betterment of society, and to ensure a breadth of knowledge and compliance with applicable accreditation standards. So that focuses on the content. Secondarily, the Board is supposed to look at the curriculum and determine whether the programs are efficient, how much cost is involved to students to complete the curriculum program, and how much time is required to ensure that they're able to get through this in a reasonable amount of time and begin participating in the workforce. The Curriculum Review Committee, which we'll talk about in connection with one of our policies today, is an option for the Board. So the Board is legally required to review the curriculum every five years. You may appoint a committee to assist you in that process. You are not required to do that. If you all wanted to do that completely on your own, you could. But this option to create a committee to do some of the legwork for you exists in Senate Bill 37. That committee can make recommendations to the Board regarding your final sort of decisions and whatever certifications you're going to submit to the coordinating board, and members of that committee may include full-time faculty, community leaders, institution administrators, industry representatives, and other individuals selected by the Board. So those are things that are allowed in the statute. None of that is required. It is all permissive. And secondarily, we're going to talk about this a little bit later, when appointing committee members, there are some applicable SACS guidelines that need to be kept in mind regarding the role of faculty in establishing the curriculum for community colleges. So we want to make sure that we do this in a way that is compliant with the law, you're meeting your obligations under the law, and also that we're compliant with our accreditation standards. And so the Board action here is to, if you're going to appoint a committee, appoint that committee so that it can get started. There is no deadline to have the committee appointed, but we recommend doing it sooner rather than later so they can get started on that process. And then at the end of that, you all will be responsible for certifying to the coordinating board that that curriculum review has been completed, and then you'll continue to do that on January 1st of each year that it's reviewed.
So the yearly curriculum review and the five-year curriculum review are different?
Correct. The annual will just be an update from the administration regarding any changes that are made to the curriculum. So if no changes are made, then there won't be a requirement for any annual update.
Does the policy say anything about what we're reviewing for?
I believe that it does. There was a request, I think, from a committee member that we include a scope if we're going to appoint a committee. What's the scope of the committee? So that's one of the items we wanted to get some feedback on. If you go back here, I mean, they give you sort of a very general framework of what you're supposed to be looking at. This is in the statute, so this is going to need to be included in there to some extent. But I think you all have some flexibility within there if you want to be more specific. But especially if appointing a committee, it will be included in the policy, so the committee knows what it's looking for.
So ultimately, it is the Board's responsibility to ensure that the curriculum is content-appropriate?
Correct.
We're the final, we are certifying to the Higher Ed Commission that it is appropriate?
Yes, that it meets these standards that are set in the statute, and then also that you've reviewed it and ensured that it's efficient and it allows students to complete that program in a reasonable amount of time.
Okay. I have questions about the SACS and trustee review kind of intersection. I don't know if that's more appropriate for closed session then.
A portion of that may be legal advice, but some of it will also come up, I think, when we're reviewing that policy and the options under the policy, and it may make more sense, we've got a framework with some different options there. It may make more sense when we're discussing that, but I'm happy to...
Okay, I can wait.
Okay. Do you all want to add anything?
Thank you. I was just going to add, when we discuss the policy EFAA, we can add the type of information, trusty, that you're referring to, and it was envisioned to do that. First, we'd like to get direction from the Board on the framework, and then we would bring back that policy with all those specifics.
Okay, great. Thank you. Did you have any questions, trustee Chibin?
Heard my mind. No questions beyond what you already asked.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then review of degrees and certificates is different. That's going to be the responsibility of the administration. So the chancellor must adopt and implement a process for reviewing minor degree and certificate programs to identify those with low enrollment that may require consolidation or elimination. This will happen at least every five years. If you have a program that has been operated for less than five years, it's excluded from that review. And then any decision regarding consolidation or elimination of a program would have to come to the Board for approval. So there's not going to be a policy here, a Board-level policy. There will be an administrative regulation, so the Board's role in this would be the approval of any decisions regarding elimination or consolidation of programs. Okay, so here, as we've talked about this a little bit, this is a timeline for our policy approval. So November 2025, which is now, we've got a group of policies we're going to present to you for approval. If there are additional changes that need to be made, we can always postpone those and approve them in December when we approve the others. There are some policies that require feedback before we can finalize those revisions, and so that's the group that's listed here for discussion and as report items today. And then in December, we anticipate having all of those policies ready for approval. And then once we have those policies ready for approval, we can proceed with the final appointment of the Curriculum Review Committee. As I mentioned in my email, I think it's important that we have EFAA local in place, a final version of that, before we move to appointment of, final appointment of committee members. You all have already approved the appointment of the existing members of the Curriculum Review Committee, which are administrative staff and appropriate under Senate Bill 37. But there was some discussion about additional people that are identified in Senate Bill 37, but I think it's important that we get EFAA finalized and in place before we do that, so we don't have to go back and make changes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is that the one-year or the five-year review?
Five-year.
That's the five-year review.
Yes. The Curriculum Review Committee is to assist the Board in its five-year review process. The one-year review is an administrative function and requires the chancellor to update you all if she makes any changes to the general education curriculum in between your five-year reviews.
Okay. So we're only certifying the five, we're not certifying the one?
Correct. That's right. Okay. Are there any other questions on this? Okay, I wanted to add this slide. This doesn't necessarily relate to any of the things that we're doing here today, but I think there have been some questions about it, so I wanted to make sure everybody was clear on this. Senate Bill 37 has some additional training requirements. Those are topics that have been added to the mandatory Higher Education Coordinating Board training that all new Board members must attend. You all have already done that. It's going to apply to new Board members. This went into effect on September 1st, so if we have a new Board member elected as a result of a runoff election, then that person will have to comply with the additional requirements here. In addition to the additional topics covered, there has to be a sworn statement affirming a Board member's understanding of their duties and responsibilities after that training. All right. Any questions? Okay, that is the end of the overview.
Great. I think it'd be faster in general if we adjourned to closed session right now. I think we'll be able to move through the rest of the agenda a little bit quicker. So, sorry, let me get my script. The meeting of the Board Governance Committee will now adjourn to closed or executive session under the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.072, and/or 551.074 of the Open Meetings Act. As stated in the notice of this meeting, should any final action vote or decision be required in the opinion of the Board on any matter considered in the closed meeting, such final action vote or decision shall be taken up the open session portion of this meeting or in a subsequent public meeting upon notice thereof. The meeting adjourned to closed session at?
2:47 PM.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The open portion of this meeting of the Board Governance Committee of the Houston City College System Board of Trustees is reconvened at?
Two thir- three thirty six P M.
Their motion to approve item B appro- approve proposed revisions to S B thirty seven related policy, BF Local Chief Executive Officer employment.
I'm moved.
There's second, I'll second. It has been moved and seconded. We will now have a discussion on the item. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is a recommendation for your consideration to approve new policy BF Local regarding employment of chief executive officer. And with your permission, Madam Chair, General Counsel Montgomery and Board Counsel Mahalik will provide an overview and respond to questions.
Thank you, Chancellor, Madam Chair, trustees. BF Local is a new policy regarding the executive search committee for the chancellor or chief executive officer should the board choose to have an executive committee.
choose to have an executive committee. Specifically, the policy would require two trustees will serve on that search committee and one will be appointed as chair. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, so as you said, it is only should we choose, should the board choose to enlist a search committee, it would have two trustees on it. Otherwise, the board could continue to do it on our own as we have been doing.
Correct.
Great. Any questions from any of my fellow board members or any other trustees? If not, we're now ready to vote on item B, approve proposed revisions to S B thirty seven related policy B F Local Chief Executive Officer employment. Voting is now open.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of three two zero.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to be pulling items C and D right now. And then we have report items for item E, F, G, and H. And we're just going to accept those into the record unless there are any questions from any of my fellow trustees. If not, I believe that is, those are the only items on the agenda. So, the meeting of the Board Governance Committee is now adjourned at?
Three thirty eight P M.
Thank you.
For November fifth, twenty twenty five will come to order at?
Three thirty eight P M.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are trustee Adriana Tames, Prieta Vandabel-Starworth, and alternate Sean Cheven. A citizen desiring to appear before the board shall complete the hearing the citizens form twenty-four hours prior to the meeting and file set application with Board Service Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the marketing committee today. We will discuss item A, Strategic Communications and Marketing Update. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This item provides an update on strategic communications and marketing that show clear metrics between communication and marketing initiatives to show student outcomes. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, Dr. Rema Dill, interim vice chancellor, will present the report and answer questions. Thank you so very much, Dr. Dill.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Good afternoon, Madam Chancellor, Board of Trustees, and esteemed colleagues here in the room. This presentation is a regular update on strategic communication and marketing, highlighting ongoing projects, K P I's, and new initiatives. So, starting with the rebrand rollout update. Over the past month, our team has been updated, updating digital assets and conducted district-wide trainings to ensure consistency across the district. I was asked to bring information on how it has impacted overall. So, we have looked at some data, and I want to start with a little bit of recap and the purpose of the rebrand. The, the purpose of the rebrand was to position the students for success in a competitive workforce. It was to ensure graduates are recognized for quality and readiness. It was also to reflect our expanded mission, including bachelor's degrees and advanced workforce programs, and serve as a strategic investment in a student's future aligned with national higher education trends. So, as we listen to our social media and our social listening we did, we looked at some of our impact matrices and compared twenty-five, the year twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty-four comparative data. And we saw that we have, since our rebrand, we have had seven hundred thousand views. That is a comparative increase of forty-five point five percent last year around this time. And we have seen over seven hundred percent increase in our mentions. So, that was very good data. And I like to remind us that last year, we had a very good year, and we had seen a lot of accomplishments in in these, the social listenings and our impact matrices. The, so, speaking of the impact, we eventually will look at other matrices. But at this time, we did look at our positive brand sentiment. Positive brand sentiment increased, as you can see here, last year from twenty-two percent to now sixty-four percent emphasizing innovation in a student's success. Those were the comments that we have captured from our social media platforms, what the students have been saying. So, during the campus celebration, which was held last, last month, we have also captured some brand sentiment from our students, what they are saying. And I do like to stop on this one a little bit and just mention the two that I want to mention here. One, a student mentioned, "I'm excited that the name change will, will let employers know. It's not just the community college. It's an institution committed to helping every student regardless of age or circumstances." Another comment that we saw, it says, "New logo to me means we are moving forward and creating more opportunities for students by expanding our degrees." We have received hundreds of these comments on different platforms. So, that does show that our students are happy about it, our community partners are, are mentioned in the media are more positive. Next, I do like to also quickly touch on our website redesign project. That is now seventy percent complete. Timeline and details are included in the materials or slide that is provided here. And a live demo will be presented at the December board meeting to, to let us know how things look. It is not live yet, but we will bring the information in the next meeting. Our marketing and communication K P I's for the month of September, they all look good. They're trending positively, including website traffic, our social media engagement, and media coverage. Now, I do like to invite Mr. Todd DePlantis to talk about H C C TV. And prior to us going there, we do like to acknowledge our H C C TV team and our marketing communication team members who are present in the room. Please sustain. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Now, H C C TV has been around since nineteen ninety-four, but we're no longer just a cable channel. H C C TV is involved, involved into a twenty-first century media hub. We produce content across streaming platforms, social media, podcasts, and digital signage to highlight student success. We also produce a number of college programs as well. Our reach and K P I's, now, we are cable channel now reaches more than seven hundred thousand cable homes in the greater Houston area. And our engagement on YouTube and LinkedIn and other social media platforms has grown significantly. We currently track our viewership through K P I's, and we watch it closely. And we have a goal this year of increasing our viewership by six percent in twenty twenty-six. Now, programming is being realigned to strategically support H C C's overall goals, which include student success, community engagement, and positioning H C C as a college of choice. We're expanding our programming now. We're looking at things differently and reimagining our programming with new robust content involving, including special series. You may remember The Real Journey we talked about earlier. We're shooting these for social media. That'll be turned into a series. We're looking at new things like that. Reality and possibly game shows and interactive formats as well. We are currently holding host auditions. We had our first round a couple of weeks ago. We've got another round coming up, and you'll see some new faces soon. Some of them students, some of them faculty and staff. It's open to students, faculty, and staff. They submit a video. We review it, and then we bring them into H C C TV for a set, a audition on set. We're creating hands-on learning opportunities there. And we're not only just bringing these new hosts in, we're going to be continually working with them and training them. We're looking ahead right now. We're exploring different things. Funding partnerships. In the past, we've had a success, proven success with our show Food Without Borders with some underwriting. We're looking at sponsorships, career development, enhancing our technology with A I, and potentially launching an H C C TV app as well to reach better engagement and to boost our relevance as well. Next steps, of course, we've got a lot going on. We're in the process of rebranding our station. We're developing new program. Host auditions are underway. We're launching new television shows. But most importantly, we've embraced this new technology that's out there. We're embracing A I. And it's, it's, it's hard to keep up with it right now, but we're, we're doing all that stuff. And I'll bring back up Dr. Adil for our Dynamo partnership.
So, as you all are aware, we have signed up Dino Dynamo partnership, and our ceremony was held on Monday. So, we are thrilled about the H C C Dynamo partnership, making H C C the official education partner of Houston Dynamo. The partnership includes internship programs, student scholarships, and joint community initiative that leverage soccer to inspire academic success and workforce readiness. Student engagement opportunities and H C C advertising, including signage and video board promotions at the stadium. That will be all included. This collaboration strengthens H C C visibility and reinforce our commitment to creating innovative pathways, connecting education, community, and opportunity. I did also include a report on new initiatives, how they are progressing. So, that is in the, in your packet. But before I close, I also like to quickly touch on the quick update on our spring marketing effort that we are making that is inclusive of mini-term and also a regular start. Our current strategy includes radio, digital TV streaming, and internet marketing. We have, we have divided the audience in key age groups, zip codes, through geo-fencing, and programmatic ads. We will provide more details in the next meeting in December. That concludes our presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
There any questions from the board? Trustee Cheven?
Just want to recognize, I'm often on social media probably more than I should be. And I have noticed a significant uptick in our social media efforts advertising both the Reconnect Scholarship and the Connect Two program. It seems like those are breaking through, starting to get more interactions, likes, et cetera. Just be curious to understand at a future meeting, how that social media push is translating into increased enrollment in those programs. That'd be a helpful stat to review before we dive into the spring semester.
Yeah, thank you. We'll bring it in the next meeting.
Thank you.
I had a question about H C C TV. You know, how we watch TV has changed dramatically, right? You know, from when I was little, you, you know, the little TV with the little switcher and, you know, and these new generations, I have kids, and I can't even understand the things they're looking at on YouTube, because they are on YouTube, because everybody's on YouTube. How are you finding, are you finding you're able to keep up with trends in the way young people who might be interested in H C C are consuming media through H C C TV? Is there any support you would need to, to do that maybe better or differently? Or do you feel like you're able to kind of keep up with that kind of changing medium?
Well, it's, it's a very good question, trustee. Thank you for asking that. I think keeping up right now with the way people are watching media, there's so many, like you mentioned, there's so many different forms. One of the first things we did ten years ago, when I arrived, is we started producing our programming, not just for the cable channel, but for the internet first. So, and then we started producing shorter programs that could be more consumable and sending them out on social media. Now, we're, you know, Facebook was our, our bread and butter for many, many years. Now, our Facebook audience has really aged out. Our students don't really, you know, Facebook's for us. Our students aren't really on Facebook, you know. So, we're having to place our programming on different, which can be challenging on different platforms. Instagram does very well for us. YouTube does very well. A lot of people watch it on YouTube. So, every piece of program that we get literally goes out in social media first, then it goes on the cable channel. And we also rely on our students. We get a number of them that come through and work for us every semester. We listen to what they, they're telling us what to do, because they're the ones who are going to tell us what we want to watch. We have a show called The Topic, which is on hiatus right now, because we've decided to rebrand The Topic. We're like, we're The Topic talking about things at H C C. We need to make it The Topic just for students. So, we're going to have a student host. We're going to have a student producer, working with one of our producers. And they're going to tell us what The Topic's all about. They're going to talk about those things. And we'll get ideas from them. Well, do you like it as a half-hour show? No, maybe we do it as a couple of five-minute shows. And we string those together for the television broadcast part. So, we're looking at different ways, and we're continually doing it, including the use of A I in some of our programming as well.
That's great. Especially, I know that the micro-influencer market is a really big deal, and that might be a way to leverage, hey, why don't you come talk to us? And then you blast it out to your friends, and that group of ten thousand people or whatever, you know, kind of that kind of cross promotion might be good. And I know we're kind of impacted a little bit on that, because we can't use TikTok, right?
Right.
And that is a huge growing medium, right? I'm on TikTok. Everybody's on TikTok. So, I really appreciate, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness in which y'all are approaching this to really kind of try to stay ahead of the trends, because it's, I'm sure, near impossible. It changes so quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Tames? Okay, that's a good question. You know, I'm an old fogey, and I miss Facebook. I'm glad I never got on Facebook, because it's now on the way out. But it's, you know, if you're a businessman or anything, marketing is so important, whatever you do. You've got to reach your target audience. You've got to pitch your, your product you're selling, and you got to be effective in doing it. And I just have no clue on what y'all are doing and how it, how it works and how you tap that market these days. So, keep up what you're doing. I like it. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Seeing no other business, the marketing committee meeting adjourns.
Thank you, Wilson. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank you so very much, respond to that. One of the ways that we are tapping into the audiences is through the view of the labor market information that we're able to get from the nine trustee districts to ensure that wherever there is a demand for specific programs, that we are able to move the courses and/or components of the program to those areas as well, so that the residents who reside in those areas, the businesses that are there, can have access to those courses in order to move into the full program at the locations where those programs are residing. For example, with the law enforcement program, there are courses that can be offered throughout our districts. Same thing with Allied Health. And then they can go to either Coleman College for the healthcare programs to complete a certificate or a degree, or to the Northeast College to complete the law enforcement training program. And the same applies for all of our other C O Vs as well, and the Centers of Excellence.
What, how many inquiries or how many, what is the trigger point or the key for changing and moving, you know, like healthcare, you know, I'd like to see that in about every campus, you know, but you have to have the demand in that. So, what triggers the, the demand, making it so it's profitable or it works to put it in that campus?
Absolutely. And it's based upon the labor market demand. As we look at the data for the demands, the inquiries for those inquiries for those programs at those locations. For example, in your area, there is a tremendous need. There are inquiries all the time from other areas as well. And Dr. Harrison has been very proactive also in expanding Farm Tech, CNA, and a number of the programs that she has at Coleman College of Health Sciences to all of our campuses. Southeast College now has a program as well. And I'd like for Dr. Harrison to briefly address that, because we've seen a substantial increase in her enrollment for this term as a result of that. Dr. Harrison?
Thank you, thank you. Great question. Yes, we are expanding across the district. We're being very strategic according to the labor market data and where we're putting those courses. So we have a course of healthcare related almost on all the campuses. So at South Campus, we have dental assisting, we have CNA for botomy, as well as we're putting our introductory classes at Southwest. We have it at, we have it at Missouri City. We have Pharmacy Tech at North Forest. We have Pharmacy Tech at Southeast. So we are expanding the programs, even with some of the limitations going in the Northwest area. We are looking to put out there medical lab. So M Lab, H Lab, we're going that way as well. As soon as the Board of Nursing gives us approval, we will expand nursing into the Northwest location. However, we're having to wait until we go through this process that we just were approved for. And once we get that, get past this first year, then we can go back and ask for expansion of locations as it relates to nursing. But what we have done to mitigate that is to start pre-nursing courses, where we are giving the students a block of classes to take, so that they are prepared for the nursing program, once we're able to expand to those other locations.
That brings up another question. What, if there is a need in one area and we don't have the, the lab facilities or the, or the welding labs or whatever, you know, how does that factor into changing? Or is that something the board's going to have to do with, we do our budgeting to make sure it works in the future?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. And that's one of the things that we're looking at as well, as we start looking at an analysis of where the demand is, what will be required, and then to create a budget with the performer that we will bring back to the board in that budgeting process.
Next budget cycle to look at all that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, going once, the marketing committee meeting adjourns at?
The Committee of the Whole meeting for November 5, 2025 will now come to order at?
4 o'clock PM.
This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. No citizens have signed up to speak before the Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to approve item A, monthly investment report?
They're moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This item is a recommendation for your consideration to financial statement and budget review of September 2025. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, Vice Chancellor McCracken will provide an overview and respond to questions.
Thank you. Very briefly, it was the first month of the year. The, the month went very well. There's no real surprises in it. As you look through it, you see that our revenues from tuition and fees was higher than budgeted. On the corresponding side, you also see that our salaries were running a little bit higher than the 8.33% we would expect. And that's due to the part-time faculty salaries to support the additional tuition and fees. Be happy to answer any questions. We also have Don Stevens, our ABC of Finance and Accounting with us, if you ask tricky
Trustees, any questions? I think you have three attachments here. Can you talk to us about where we are in terms, I know it's the first year of the fiscal, first month of the fiscal year? Where are we in terms of the fire department?
We're better than that.
As far as just how we're performing in terms of our investment accounts, can you kind of give us a synopsis there? What's the trend line there?
Yeah, so we, we see the, I'm not sure what's, what I'm showing on screen here. I think I got myself lost. What we see is, we see kind of the declining in our interest rate return on our investments. We continue to earn more on investments than we're paying out in interest, but we're seeing that decline. I think we were at 4.09% this most recent month in September. It's gone down some since then, as we see the decline in interest rates overall. Fund balance wise, we're very healthy. We put some additional funding into the fund balance at the close of the year. I think there was a trustee inquiry related to that. So we ended up, I believe that the number was 12 million, if my memory is right, that we added to the fund balance. So that helps us, but ultimately, as those interest rates go down, our other local income is going to continue to decline as a percentage.
That decline that we're seeing, obviously the feds last week again had a 25 basis points drop. How is that trend relative to what we had in the budget for, you know, that source of income going into this fiscal year?
Let me ask the expert.
I thought you might. Good evening, everybody. In the budgeting process, we did consider the, that the rates were dropping and the budget reflected that. We did decrease the expected income and we are monitoring monthly the investment in our portfolio as well as the rates to see if we need to make any adjustments. But we did consider that in the budgeting process.
And thanks for letting us know. I know we, we contemplated that. We don't know as trustees how we are doing relative to what we built in. So even if we don't have it this month, I think by next month, just given all the dynamics, and it's not purely a question about where we are financially. I think we all agree that fiscally we're in a sound position. However, this was a running conversation last year about how we repositioning our investments relative to where we see the trends. So if we believe that there are no more rate reductions that the Fed is primed for this year, I mean Chairman Paul was pretty clear about that. His term expires in April or something. We're going to go into Q1 next year. So I think we should be thinking about how do we reposition those assets that might be on a 12-month cycle, a 24-month cycle. Now would be the time to really be thinking about that, because, you know, if another decline happens by January, rule to miss the window.
Right, yes. And we can certainly have that available for the next meeting, analysis of where we are and how we thought we would be.
All right. That'd be helpful.
Part of the goal for the December budget meeting was also to do kind of a status report on where we're at relative to some of those budget assumptions.
Trustees, any other questions? All right. Hearing none. This will call for the vote. Voting is now open.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of 5 to 0.
All right. That was swift. All right, I'm sorry.
Do you have to wait 10 minutes?
Yeah, technically. The meeting of the Committee of the Whole will now adjourn?
At 4:06 PM.
All right.
The special meeting starts at 4:15.
special meeting for November 5, 2025 will now come to order at?
4:16 PM.
This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desired to appear A citizen's desire to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens formed 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services officers. There are no citizens signed up to speak today. It's their motion regarding item A, General Education Curriculum Review Committee.
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Melissa Mahalik, Board Counsel, will introduce the item.
Thank you. This is an item that was postponed from the October special meeting to November special meeting, so we continue this to a special date. If you recall, in October, there was a vote to approve the Core Curriculum Council to fulfill the Curriculum Review Committee requirement of Senate Bill 37, and there was an amendment to that motion to have a second vote in November to appoint additional members. So I sent an email on this just to sort of give the Board a roadmap for where we're headed, and what we'd like to propose is that this item be continued again until we have finalized the policies that will set the structure of this committee and the scope of the committee's work. And so what we'd like to request is a motion to postpone this item until Policy EFAA Local has been finalized and we have a structure for the committee in place.
Great, thanks for that report. Question, question colleagues?
No, and that was what we talked about in Board Governance when we postponed it to the December, December election. That's, I mean, December, meeting, sorry.
Somebody's excited about elections around here. Question, Ms. Mahalik, as we're postponing it to December, have we contemplated the mechanism by which trustees might provide potential nominees for whatever the eventual structure turns out to be?
There has been some discussion, but a lot of that is going to depend on what that structure ends up being. And so, so what we're actually proposing is not to postpone this item to December, but postpone it until that policy has been finalized, and once we have the policy, then we can make the nominations. That may mean that the nominations and the committee finalization come in January. That's permissible under Senate Bill 37. The only deadline for the Curriculum Review Committee and Senate Bill 37 is the submission of the certification from the Board in January of 2027. So we, I'm hesitant to propose a mechanism for those nominations when we don't know yet what the committee will consist of and what type of nominations will need to be. We anticipate it's going to be similar to the process that the Board follows in nominating representatives to the HCAD Board, something similar to that, where you take nominations from the floor and then the Board can vote. But it will again depend on the structure of that committee and how many of each category of individuals will have on filling those different spots.
Vice Chair, one of my concerns with this has been because SACS requires that the faculty have the major voice in this, if every single board member nominates one person, you would have to have an enormous committee that would be very difficult to work with in order to have that faculty voice remain. And, and we certainly don't want the Chancellor to be in a position where she is going to have to pick among her favorite trustees. You don't have to admit it's me, Madam Chancellor, but, you know, but, you know. And so we don't want to put her in that position. And so, you know, kind of how to, how to work it to where we can have some input, but not overwhelm the committee with trustee nominees.
And so what General Counsel is working on, and I may let her step in here, with outside counsel who's helping and develop these policies, are some different options for framework for how the Board might structure this committee. One would have more, more industry and outside individuals involved. One would have fewer, but the Board would vote on it either way because that's required under Senate Bill 37, so I'll let Nicole address that in more detail.
Certainly, and they're in your packet, all the different samples, and I'll have them on the screen. This is pre SB 37 of what exists currently. And then we also have different samples. These are really examples, yes ma'am, yes sir.
Which packet is it in?
It is in the packet for Governance Committee that is under Policy EFAA Local, and it also should be on your screen.
Yeah, the screen is, you know, illegible, it's not visible from this.
Got it, thank you for that clarification. It's right here for, so it is Policy EFAA Local, and it's the Governance Committee packet, and it has samples which are just really examples for the Board to consider and then give us feedback, and then we would have the actual policy drafted.
And so we'll present this to the Board and get some feedback and discuss, and have more discussion on this before we decide a direction forward. Like I said, we want to get that policy in place, then we'll create the structure, and then we'll discuss some different options for how we might structure those nominations that are consistent with whatever committee structure the Board decides to go forward with.
What you've shared indicates five to 10, at least in sample number one, five to 10 ex-official administrators/specialists, two from community and industry, perhaps two each, and then the voting structure becomes 80% faculty, including librarians, and then 20% administration. So the additional members will, in effect, if they're ex-official, they don't constitute the voting membership then?
We're going to define, trustee, that's a great question, ex-official, there's options for the Board. You can, the Board can choose to make them voting members as long as the majority are faculty, to trustee Reickert's point regarding SACS compliance. So there, there's several different options, and also we can utilize advisory committees that we have throughout the college as well, and so there's, there's lots of options there for the Board to consider.
All right. So I guess we'll have to entertain a motion to table this item.
And, and what I'd like to request is a motion to postpone until Policy EFAA has been finalized.
Is there such a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Sharon, do we need to restate the motion?
I have, I have a motion to postpone until Policy EFAA Local has been finalized. If I could get first and second?
I think trustee Reickert.
Trustee Reickert and Tamir seconded.
Received. Are we ready for the vote?
Yep.
We are.
Voting has concluded, the motion passed with a vote of five to zero.
All right, the specimen of the Houston City College System Board of Trustees will now adjourn to a closed executive session under the Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and/or 551.074 of the Open Meetings Act as stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action, voter decision be required in the opinion of the Board on any matter considered in a closed meeting, such final action, voter decision shall be taken up in the open session portion of this meeting or in a subsequent public meeting upon notice thereof. The meeting adjourns to closed session at 4:25 PM.
Staff members are now dismissed. Thank you so much for your attendance.
All right, the open portion of this meeting, of the special meeting of the Houston City College Board of Trustees reconvened at?
Five twenty P M.
Okay, the meeting of the special meeting is now adjourned at?
Five twenty P M.
All right.